Around ten o'clock, more or less. And then they're gonna go to the river park where they have the competitions. So everyone is welcome to come and join them. And lastly, on the eighteenth, the Chamber will be having their annual market days downtown. Now Ministries will also be hosting a health fair. And at three o'clock will be the Armed Forces Parade downtown. So hopefully all of y'all can come down that day also. Okay, now we're gonna start with old business. Consideration in action to approve the minutes from the regular meeting, April twenty-fifth, two thousand and thirteen.
I'll move for certain minutes from the regular meeting, April twenty-fifth, two thousand and thirteen.
A second. Okay, I have a motion by Councilman Guerrero, and a second by Councilwoman Castillo. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Please, I think Mr. Lee.
At this time, I'm gonna skip around, I'm gonna move up to the top, number three, new business. Consideration in action to present proclamation to designate May twenty-seventh, two thousand and thirteen, Poppy Day. And I'm going to read that proclamation. Whereas the Florisville American Legion Auxiliary Unit Thirty-Eight adopted the poppy as its memorial flower. And whereas, by wearing the poppy, Americans everywhere, and especially in the city of Florisville, can play tribute to the war dead and the living by assistance to veterans and their families in time of need. And whereas, the Poppy Day program contributions are used solely for the programs of veterans' rehabilitation and child welfare in our community and state. And therefore, I, Mayor DeAnagasa of the city of Florisville, Texas, do hereby proclaim May twenty-seventh, two thousand and thirteen, as Poppy Day. And urge all citizens to recognize and support the Florisville American Legion Auxiliary Unit Thirty-Eight in our community. With this my hand and seal, the city of Florisville this ninth day of May. Ms. LaHona?
Thank you so much.
Would you like to say a few words?
Yes, I really would, because it's an opportunity. To thank everyone for this, because this is, the poppies are distributed in the community, and all this money goes towards our veterans. These poppies are made by our veterans. And so they are distributed, when they're not sold, they're distributed and donations are taken. So we thank you for the city of Florisville for helping us with this project, and we'll be around town the seventeenth, and the eighteenth, and the twenty-fourth. So, we thank you so much. The twenty-seventh, we'll be having an Iwo Jima dedication at the hall, so we want to invite everybody to that. Thank you so much.
If anybody does not have their poppy, they have their little can, and you can get a poppy and try to make a donation.
Get it right now. Okay, thank y'all so much. Thank y'all. Thank the ladies.
Just for the record, I'm gonna go ahead and make the motion to approve the proclamation.
Okay.
Designated May twenty-seventh.
Okay. And a second by?
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, and the men want to eat, so we can.
Okay. Okay, then we have a second proclamation. To designate the week of May fifteenth as Police Week. Eric, twenty-fourth?
I'd like to say a little something. I don't have the latest proclamation. The National Police Week is a week to remember those that have fallen in the line of duty and honor the men and women who keep our neighborhood safe, enforce our laws, and respond in times of crisis throughout our city and county. The law enforcement career is important to every citizen, every city, and county to keep peace and order. Law enforcement officers put their lives on the line every day to defend the citizens of the community. This, this week is a way to honor their, their commitment to their community and let them know they are appreciated. National Police Week started in nineteen sixty-two by a joint resolution approved with President Kennedy designating May fifteenth as Peace Officers Memorial Day, which was a way to honor those officers who have died in the line of duty, also the week that the date falls as Police Week. During the week, thousands of law enforcement officers were around the, the world, uniting Washington, D.C., to participate in a number of events to honor those that have paid the ultimate sacrifice. Wilson County has seen one in, fallen in the line of duty, nineteen eighty-six, Sammy Childress, Deputy Sheriff, Wilson County Sheriff's Office. We take the day of May fifteenth to remember Deputy Childress and all the officers around the, the country that have paid the ultimate prices. We thank all officers who wear the badge, police department, county, DPS, for protecting and serving the citizens of our city and the county. Thank you.
For veterans and citizens. Yeah. You can read the top one.
Okay. The Congress and President of the United States have designated May fifteenth as Peace Officers Memorial Day and the week in which May fifteenth falls as National Police Week. And the members of the Florisville Police Department, Wilson County Sheriff's Office, Texas Department of Public Safety, and all law enforcement, playing an essential role in safeguarding the rights and freedoms of both the citizens of and visitors of Florisville. And it's important that all citizens know and understand the deputies, and, and the duties, responsibilities, hazards, and sacrifices of their law enforcement agency. And the members of the Florisville Police Department, Wilson County Sheriff's Office, Texas Department of Public Safety, and all law enforcement recognize their duty to serve the people by safeguarding life and property, by protecting them against violence and disorder, and by preventing oppression and deception against the weak and the innocent. And whereas, the men and women of the Florisville Police Department, Wilson County Sheriff's Office, Texas Department of Public Safety, and all law enforcement unceasingly provide a vital public service.
Therefore, I, DeAnagasa, Mayor of the city of Florisville, call upon all citizens of Florisville and all patriotic civic and educational organizations to observe the week of May fifteenth as Police Week, so that all of our people may join in commend, commend the mayors in law enforcement officers past and present, who by their faithful and loyal devotion to their responsibilities, have rendered a dedicated service to their communities, and in doing so, have established for themselves an invitable and enduring reputation for serving the rights and security of all citizens. I further call upon all citizens of Florisville to observe Wednesday, May the fifteenth, as Peace Officers Memorial Day, in honor of those law enforcement officers who, through their courageous deeds, have made, have made the ultimate sacrifice in service to their community, or have become disabled in performance of duty, and let us recognize and pay respect to the survivors of all our fallen heroes. And witness thereof, I hear, I have here unto my set, my hand, and cause to seal the city of Florisville on this day, May the ninth, two thousand and thirteen. May I have a motion on this proclamation?
Yes, Mayor. I move to approve the proclamation to designate the week of May fifteenth as Police Week.
Okay, may I have a second?
Oh, second, the motion.
Okay, I have a motion by Councilman Castillo and Councilman Rodriguez. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? No, may I have a motion carries? And I believe we have some of our meeting, there's someone from the county. Do you wanna come up so we can take pictures?
Yeah, you fit. Barely.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Monica will be sending out a copy of the proclamation. Perfect. Thank you. This time, we're gonna go to item two, aid presentations. Unproposed use of force of water towers for installation of broadband internet equipment is supposed to be.
First of all, I thank you for even hearing me since I showed up late. I want to thank the mayor and the council members for the opportunity to speak this evening, and thank the residents for coming up with my lateness. Glad I called you, because I was trying to figure out where you were. A couple years ago, we, we put forth the proposal, and I don't know, I think I sent the proposal a little bit late to get copies for everybody. Do you have a?
Is it the same as the, the draft of?
This is March twenty-two, two thousand and twelve. Water tower communication license.
Okay, yeah. Then we don't have it.
Oh.
I would like to say that, really, I was gonna say in all of my adult life, but really the reality is, is that in all of my life, I've never been anywhere longer than I've been here in Florisville. And that's a really nice thing to say. Military has taken me all over the world, and Florisville welcomed me here in about two thousand and one, and I just stayed. I loved it here. And I intend to stay here for probably as long as I'm here on this earth. The proposal that's before you is very similar to the proposal that we put forth in two thousand and ten. And in essence, what it says is that we would like the ability to deliver internet services off from the old tower, the water tower that I believe is still no longer in use behind Sacred Heart, and possibly off the, the tower on B Street, to deliver internet services to the residents of Florisville, and also to deliver voice-over IP to the residents of Florisville. And probably one of the biggest differences of the voice-over IP that we deliver is, unlike Verizon, we actually deliver full-featured phone services to businesses and residents, including caller ID and voicemail, and voicemail-to-email features that are not available with Verizon. And the city has been using our services for about three years now. So, we've got the city and the police department, Wilson County News, and several other customers on the voice-over IP. We've got several of the major businesses here in town that are on internet service through Top Gun. Some of you are familiar with our history, and some of you are not. We have been around for a long time. We initially, we sold our first company to Internet America in two thousand and five, and they, some of you have been customers of them since that, and had realized that their customer service has kind of fallen off, and it's kind of why we, we had a splitting of the ways. The towers are instrumental for Top Gun to be able to deliver services to some of these residents. And this is true broadband service. The analogy, or the, the comment that's made that there's no broadband service in Wilson County is false. There's been broadband in Wilson County since two thousand and one. We would all, including myself, would like it to be on a wire, on a phone line, or on Roadrunner, or something like that. But the reality is that the cost of that is so intensive that most companies will not do it. They have to come in here, they have to put all the cable infrastructure in, and then they have to compete against the people that are already there. And we would like the ability, especially since Stellara has announced that they're officially closing business on April thirty, and Stellara customers are coming in our doors at about four to five a day, wondering what they can do for service. We would like the ability to be one of those that can compete for that business. The proposal that I have before you is to say that, very similar to what we proposed in two thousand and ten, that we would, if the, the city will purchase the equipment, we will place all of the equipment in place to connect the city hall, the convention center, the police department, and the public works, so that they're all on one private network, which means that they can share servers, they can have phones that are on the same phone system. That means they can extension dial each other at each location, they can share the internet. For example, I'm not opposed to the city using some, another internet provider. If the city wanted to get, let's say, a time-worn fiber connection, at either the police department, or the city hall, or the convention center. When we have the buildings networked, that fiber connection could be shared with all city facilities. So the cost reduction is significant, and the reliability is significant, as your major backbone is in fact fiber. So there's a, there's an opportunity here where we can work together, Top Gun can work with the city, and it works to my benefit, because we can increase our, our scope of coverage to the residents and to the businesses of Florisville. And at the same time, we can give the city the services that to, will connect the multiple buildings, the multiple facilities, on a common internet carrier, to use common servers and to use common phone system. Top Gun is willing to put in all of the equipment, all of the labor will be donated, in exchange for the use of the towers, specifically the one behind Sacred Heart is one that's in question right now. And that, I, I believe the lease agreement says that what we would like to do is be able to say, for three years, we get use of that tower, after three years, we would start paying lease agreement, actually lease fees on the tower. In light of the fact that, if you have not already, you are about to lose revenues from Stellara, I, I'm hoping that the council will see this as a fair opportunity to increase the networking for the, the city hall and the convention center, as well as improve services to the community. Any more questions?
I have a, I have a question. I have just a quick question. You said that you would connect the phones from city hall, from PD, convention center, and maintenance department. Right now, we're already connected, or PD, because we can call them by this name.
That is correct. You are connected right now over a leased line. That's a line that we have put in, that allows you to be on the same network for the phone system.
After the three years, what would be the ballpark figure of leasing that?
The agreement, what I've, what I've stated in the agreement is, what we would be willing to pay is anywhere between seventy-five and a hundred and twenty-five dollars per antenna that we place on the tower. So, and that can actually be monitored, so if we place three antennas on the tower, and then we've got that seventy-five dollars an antenna, you know, that's two and a quarter a month.
Counselor, you wrote quite an extensive piece over the last one. Do you believe that we can overcome your objections in a new agreement?
I think they can be overcome, I just, this is the first I've seen of this one.
Well, as this isn't a consideration in action, but rather a presentation, I would encourage Mr. Mullen to work with city staff and our council to come up with an agreement that can be brought back to this council for approval.
I would like to state for the record, that if, I, I'm perfectly willing to entertain If we are going to entertain that, I would like for your agreements with Internet America to be a part of that, because one of the objections during the last meeting was the fact that you could not have guaranteed me frequency. And in fact, I know that those agreements are in place with Internet America. So I would like the same.
You want a reciprocal?
I, if, if they're gonna be able to have that agreement, I would like to be, have the same agreement. And that, that's, that was the statement of fairness.
I, I think that, that can be brought about. I think, I don't know that, you know, if you have difficulty in that before it comes back to the council, I would like to know about that. But I think between city staff and, and our council, we can come up with an agreement that is gonna work for you, as well as the citizens of this community. The loss of Stellara, I'm receiving phone calls, looking for recommendations as to where we can do this. I, I will, in full disclosure, say I am a customer of Top Gun. Not the voice-over IP, but the internet service, and I've bounced from provider, and provider, and provider in this community, and the level of service that I get from them is unparalleled to anybody else. And if we can offer that same thing to other residents in this community, with the loss of Stellara, I'm all for doing so.
Now, would being that the, that this, the police department is exercising, or trying to, to get their ticket writers, would this, would you, would you think that it'd be working hand-in-hand with the wifi that, that, that you can provide for the, the police department? It could very potentially be. Let me, let me explain another thing. Some of you are not aware that we are the only internet provider in town that is providing free wireless hotspots to citizens and to guests that roll through this city. We, we own florisvillefreenet.com, and people that were currently delivering downtown, the old Walmart, off the Connolly Hospital, we've got eight hotspots throughout the city, where somebody can roll up and they can actually get free internet. And the first page they see is Florisville advertisements, the Florisville Wilson County news feed, and they have to use that to be able to get on. So they get some little flavor of what's going on in Florisville, and our intent is to be able to provide that citywide.
That same network could be used in the same way you're talking about with the wifi.
That's exactly my point. Because once, once the network is built in that way, we can provision the, the police vehicles, so that they have uninhibited access on those networks, and they could in fact have that. And perhaps on, on the VPN as well? On a VPN as well? Got it. Right.
Mr. Mullen, how does this provide internet service to residents?
Pardon?
Residential? Is this for residential to replace Stellara? Because I have Stellara.
It is for residential. Our, our business primarily right now is about seventy-five percent business, and the remainder is residential. We've just started to do residential services.
Okay, because you didn't offer it in the first proposal.
That is correct. So we are offering it now, we're actually dividing, we have two separate networks. The businesses ride on one network, and the residential ride on another, so they don't affect each other.
Do you have an idea of the cost versus Stellara for residents?
Yes, the cost is about the same at twice the speed, or half the price at the same Our residential services start at twenty-four ninety-five a month, which, underneath Texas state law, anything under twenty-five, first twenty-five dollars is non-taxable. So say they sign up for twenty-four ninety-five, and that's their bill, twenty-four ninety-five. Their speed of that is about three meg of down, download, and one meg of up, which is what most people are getting from Stellara right now, which is about half the price of Stellara.
How long are they gonna operate? Because I still have Stellara working.
Stellara, I think I put a note in there. I think they're facing about?
It's the thirtieth.
So it's the thirtieth of the week.
Thirty days, I think is what they're, they're not guaranteeing anything beyond the thirty days. They're trying to keep live for their customers for that long, so they can transition off.
Tell me, from my backyard, I look at that pretty tower on B Street. What would it look like after the contraptions are out there? That's very important to the.
The, most of the contraptions that I would put up on B Street in particular, would be on the handrails. So you would not really see them. It's not like the Stellara, when Stellara came in, they went on the north, or the south tower, they put that huge cage and the infrastructure up there, and they put all the contraptions up there, and then they did the same thing with Pope. Most of our stuff is mounted on the handrails, so you don't see it in the profile.
What is that? I'm sorry, I don't understand that. It's on handrails.
But you, you have a dome. You have a dome, and the handrails are typically right here. So as you walk around the handrails, it's where the antennas would be mounted. If they were up above, on top of the dome, you would see them.
They're not gonna add disruption.
No, you're not really gonna see.
And it's not gonna cover the paws?
No.
Is this possible to, to add back to us at our next council meeting?
When's the next council meeting? Is it possible to have a vote?
It's very possible to have a vote. I mean, I would encourage you to work with city staff.
It's definitely possible to have a vote. There would be an issue in our society.
We're two weeks.
Time an issue.
I would just, you know, add it in there to make sure that it reflects that, that in the contract, that you'd be going to, to exercise that idea of, of the.
The PD, yeah.
Well, it's, it's greatly enhanced by the fact that the, the network that I'm proposing for the city is actually the city's. So there would be no customers riding on that network. It's not a network that I would be using to deliver internet. What I'm saying is, well, I'm gonna put this network up for the use of the city, in exchange for the use of the real estate that they have to service. So that network is totally yours, so it's, is a very easy matter of routing the, the police traffic through that, so that they stay clearly on that.
How, how, how big of a radius are you looking at, at covering?
Well, with, if I had both towers, the, we could actually cover all, all of the Florisville city limits, as far as for the use of the police. They, they would have complete access.
And as for residential customers?
Residential customer would extend down to probably Bentwood, Shannon Ridge, south into Pope, soon. So we'd get quite a bit of extensive coverage with the use of the towers.
When you present this to us, and if there are any other costs involved to the city in enabling the wifi to the police department, I would like to take a look at those. Some detailed costs on the equipment, you estimated here about two thousand dollars. What additional equipment may be needed as a result of that? Obviously, phone equipment, going from a, a landline-based system, and forgive my ignorance in the terminology, to a voice-over IP system, I think may require some different equipment, and what those costs would be involved. And if that's something we can transition into, and not necessarily do day one, but transition into, what kind of costs those would be?
You, you, excuse, I'm sorry. You said that, that the city is originally, already using the voice-over IP. That's right. Right? So technically.
City and meeting. But not the center or the shop.
That's right. Okay, so technically, you just have to be adding a couple, rather than the, the full. Right, that's exactly right. So let's say, just as an example, if you were looking at, let's say, two phones for public works, and three phones for the convention center, you, you look at about five hundred dollars in a foot of cost for the phones.
And just be able to present, when, when you come back to the council on this thing, what those costs are gonna be, and certainly, Andy and company would be able to, to address whether we have the resources to do those today, or when we will have the resources, so that we could look at a timeline.
Very good. I can do that.
Appreciate your time.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
What about the businesses of residents that are gonna be below the line of sight? How, how are you gonna be able to connect the internet to that? Are you gonna put an antenna that's gonna go forty, fifty feet up, so you can be on the line of sight?
We have a, we have a different way of networking. I have been in this wireless business for, since nineteen ninety-five. And in this city of Florisville, we have a lot of wireless providers. And what happens when we typically move to a tower location, and then we try to deliver services to all the customers, we end up with issues. And the issues are because we're fighting for frequency with Internet America, with GDC, with LV wifi, or zipling. So we operate on a different strategy. What we do, I'm kinda giving away some trade secrets here, but I've told them, and they don't wanna listen to me, so, okay. We, what we typically do is, we come down into an area, a neighborhood area, and we create a dedicated repeater for that neighborhood, and that repeater is connected to my tower. So, and you, if you were a resident, would be connected to that repeater. And what we, when we do that, we're below all the radio frequencies that, of all the other carriers. So we have, we eliminate a lot of the interference that we would normally have to deal with. So, we don't usually put up thirty-foot poles on houses. I, I'm assuming that's where you were going with that. Typically, where we wanna. Typically where we want, we usually put up a ten-foot pole, or a three-foot pole, or a little satellite mount, because we concentrate it into a small area where there's fifteen, twenty homes that are within that given area that can connect off that repeater, and that eliminates the thirty, forty, fifty-foot poles that you see on the houses and you see on the businesses which are an ISO or third.
And would you have redundancy?
Redundancy and when?
If, say, one of your modules on the tower fails, and it holds city hall and the police department, are you going to be routed through the internet?
The redundancy, we can build in redundancy to the city network, as far as the customer side, the, we have a redundancy that, but it's manually operated right now, so if we have a repeater that goes down, we actually reprogram things so that it's not an automatic failover.
I was asking more for the businesses, the city hall, event center, police department, and so, sometimes they need to offer a twenty-four hour update.
Right.
What does the timeline look like? When's the contract be signed?
I'm ready to go tomorrow.
Okay, but how long does it take to put it up? Have it working?
It would take me probably five days.
Really?
Five days.
Who else do you have working for you?
That's me. I just lost my installer, so, so right now, it's just me, I got to find a new installer, so if you know anybody looking for a job. But I will tell you this, is that we came here in two thousand and one, and the first three hundred installs that we did in Wilson County, I did them, so, including all the towers, all the water towers, including Old Hills, and Pope, and Stockdale, and Waco Tanks, and Sutherland Springs, I did all of those as well, so, when I'm motivated, I can move.
So, if I changed over phone, I mean, someone who has Stellera today and used your services, are you able to service the rest of them today?
I've already moved five customers this week that were Stellera customers.
You have a business card?
My man, which is, over at JP is getting fixed, so, trying to get ready for the rush.
I'll give you your number, pardon, I'm sorry.
Where do you live? By the Pretty, by the Pretty Falls?
By the Pretty Falls. The Pretty Falls, I'm going back there, I'll cover them, in the middle school, she likes it.
I'm sure we can take care of you. Any other questions?
No, but there's one back there.
Oh, yes.
I just have this question for this, towards the city council and mayor, is this going to turn like a trash business where everything sounds good, and then we end up with little trash cans? And I guess what I'm saying is this is open for bids for other companies to make bids towards the city, or is it, is it a closed deal?
It's not a closed deal at any point. At, at this point, we said, contact city staff, work with legal, make sure that we're doing this the right way. If this is something that we have a responsibility to put out for bid, I'm sure council will advise us of that. If this is something that is perfectly acceptable, I'm also confident that council will advise us of it. No decision's been made here tonight, simply we've asked Mr. Mullen to work with city staff and our legal counsel to develop a formal proposal for this council to consider. That's all we've done here.
Just to, you know, kind of, yeah, early bird, early bird gets the worm?
I understand, yeah.
Type of deal, so?
I understand, yeah. I'm just saying if it's open for other companies, they can also.
Yeah, usually when, when the city actually comes out and requests for services, there is a, an RFID request quote, where the city actually has to come out, and they actually has to publish it, and I am not coming, the city is not coming to me, I'm coming to them and making a proposal for them.
And I'm sure those issues will come up during the formal presentation of the document. Thank you, Mr. Mullen, I really appreciate your time.
Thank you, and thank you for hearing me out, since I was late, and I really appreciate that.
Okay, at this time, we're going to go on to item two B, adjourning to executive session pursuant to Texas Government Code five five one point zero seven one to receive update from the city attorney on all active pending and or threatened litigation. Can I have a motion to enter into executive session?
I make some motion to go into executive session.
Motion by Councilman Rodriguez, second by Councilman Guerrero. All in favor? All opposed? Motion carries. We're going to ask everybody, if they could please step outside, because this would be our executive session.